I got a call from both Dave and Erin. They're stuck in traffic on 70. So unfortunately, they'll be a little late. So they can note that the other five members are here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please. There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard 5-0. MSBA Board Report, Elizabeth, please.
Welcome to the March edition of the Missouri School Board Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the importance of advocacy on the state level. It's critical that board members and superintendents communicate frequently with state legislators about the impact of proposed legislation in your school district. MSBA's Spring Meeting Series focused on advocacy starts with the Spring Virtual Meeting, held on March 13th. As part of the Spring Meeting Series, MSBA will host live Lunch and Learn virtual advocacy programs on the 15th and 22nd of March and a final meeting on April 5th. MSBA Director of Outreach Caitlin Whaley says that the Lunch and Learn meetings are important lead-ins to Advocacy Day.
I think any time that we can provide you with some updates on policy and just general happenings as it relates to public education is going to help prepare you for Advocacy Day. So we've got three wonderful sessions on those Lunch and Learns. We're going to hear from the current Commissioner of Education, Margie Van Deven, and we're also going to hear from our Finance Director, Linda, about some things happening with the financial cliff. And then we'll also have a prep session about specifically Advocacy Day with Grant so we can really get you as prepared and informed as possible going into that Advocacy Day.
And make plans now to visit Jefferson City for Advocacy Day on April 9th. Programming begins at the Mill Bottom in Jefferson City at 9:30 a.m. and concludes at the Missouri State Capitol where you can visit your legislator, attend the rest of the program, and check out the student showcase. As always, we urge you to stay in contact with your legislator not only during Advocacy Day but during the entire legislative session. Caitlin says it's important to communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district.
School board members are really that local voice for public education. So while we are so happy to welcome our school board members to Jefferson City for Advocacy Day, really every day is Advocacy Day for school board members. You are in your community, you're meeting with not only legislators but local leaders, local thought leaders, and you are the voice for the value of public education and what need public education fills in your community. And here at MSBA, we want to make sure that we're giving you the tools and the information that you need to be a strong voice for public education.
As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on developments through our Legislative Voice Newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session through critical issue alerts and periodic webinars. The state of Missouri's Department of Public Safety is offering another school safety improvement program for fiscal year '24, expiring June 1st of this year. The fiscal year '24 program funding provides public school districts that did not participate in last year's funding program with one year at no cost access to MSBA's online emergency operations plan development tool, MoEOP. Any Missouri public school district not yet using the MoEOP tool should take advantage of this limited time offer. John McDonald, the Chief Operating Officer of MSBA Center for Education Safety, says that it's more important than ever to have a good emergency operations plan.
I've responded to and managed school threats and emergencies for the past 16 years. And what I know to be true is that the school threats of today are more complicated than ever before. And the very best school safety, prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery begins with a robust emergency operation plan. At CES, we believe strongly, like all of you, in the duty to protect our students and staff. And it was with this in mind that we created the web-based Missouri Emergency Operation Plan Tool, also known as MoEOP. But 247 districts across the state have been using for the past year. The MoEOP tool, with your input, will provide you with a safe and secure web-based all-hazard school emergency operation plan.
Visit the MSBA website for more information on how to register for your district's free MoEOP tool. And last, but certainly not least, it's March, which means it's School Board Recognition Month. All of us at MSBA sincerely want to thank each and every one of you for all that you do. Your hard work and dedication to your schools and communities are appreciated, and your commitment to all students does not go unnoticed. Visit the MSBA website for materials to help celebrate. So with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in April for the next MSBA Board Report.
Okay, the next item on the agenda?
I can pay you cash for your house.
Before we do that, does anybody want to add anything to the MSBA Board Report? Okay, next item on the agenda, Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year, Dr. Berger.
Mr. President, thank you. I'm going to ask Dr. Way recognize our Support Staff and our Teacher of the Year, but to give him a little time, he'll come up and maybe you look very nice this evening, and you can come up and take a picture with our folks, too. While you're preparing for that, though, I think it's important to also acknowledge all the other honorees from the building. So from our early childhood, PJ Simpson for our Support Staff of the Year and Ashley Zuhon as our Teacher of the Year, from East Elementary, Ann June for our Support Staff of the Year, and Shelby Hunter-Breaker, is that Dr. Way? I know Shelby, but I struggled with that last name. West Elementary, Heather Atkins for Support Staff of the Year, and Bria Prince, and I practiced Bria quite a bit when we came and saw you recently. Middle School, Erica McGowan for Support Staff of the Year, and Amber Smith for Teacher of the Year, and High School, Michelle Kunkel for Support Staff of the Year, and Kelsey Kimery for Teacher of the Year. And after that, I'll turn it over to...
Well, let's give them a round of applause.
Dr. Way loves it whenever I put him on the spot.
So we talked about this enough today. So we have Dawn here from East Mesiquent, and she's going to get up and talk about Ann real quick, our Support Staff of the Year.
All right, I'll come up here because Ann's up here. Ann is very much a behind-the-scenes person, so I know she doesn't like this, so I'll make it as short as I can. But we started out our year with pretty much our feet getting knocked out from underneath us. We're very much aware of that. Ann reached out to me and said, "What can I do? How can I help?" She wasn't even employed anymore.
Oh, she was.
Well, I mean, it was July. But she reached out, and I think within the next day, we were already up at East Elementary, "How can I help? What can I do?", and has stayed with us. So we've actually, I hope she enjoys being with us, but we absolutely enjoy having her there. She has filled in tremendously and been just incredible. So just speaks value to her integrity, her compassion, and her willing to see a need in our district and saying, "I can fill it." And we so appreciate that from you. Thank you.
I invited more people than was rehearsed, but we'll make it work.
My turn ever often? It's just going to be hurled.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I hope you appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Dawn.
I'm still waiting for her to come over.
Come on, Bria.
I said it's pretty concise, but Bria did here. I'm going to brag on Bria for a minute and pump her tires here. So we are down a person as of October. We were down this bed teacher, and Bria already had her grade-level case load, and she jumped right in. She's done whatever has needed to be done. I mean, you guys have seen our CCIP reports, our sped scores are not suffering, and a lot of that's due in part to Bria's efforts, additional efforts on top of what she was already doing. And then the other thing, too, we need to understand, is Bria's second year. Last year was her first year, and it was my first year as principal over there, and I can remember distinctly having conversations with her, post-observation conversations, and Bria, she wanted to keep asking questions. She wanted to grow. And I mean, they were the longest post-observation... A good one that I had all year. But I was sitting there thinking, "She's going to do this because look at her. She's asking questions. She wants to grow. She's a self-starter, and I'm incredibly proud of you. I really am, and the ceiling is so high for you, Bria, and I'm proud of you." Okay?
Congratulations.
Yes, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Berger, middle school.
We're going to do a little more appreciation. So this will start with a video, and then we'll do a couple more things. You got to read through the video.
They make big decisions about stuff like policies and budget and make sure our education is awesome. They listen to students', parents', and teachers' needs and make sure the school is better for everyone. They're like the guardians of our education adventure.
Making the school fun. Keep the school safe.
That was done by high school students. I don't remember one of their names right now. And Jack Ginnar.
Can you read this?
Oh, I don't have a hand one.
Oh, I do.
Okay, good. I brought my glasses. So, you know, Ann, you lay a little piece that I do is I want to read this, and I know it's, I don't like to read anything word-for-word, but I do read this because I think it's important. So this is Governor's Proclamation, acknowledgement of your efforts. Whereas a system of quality public education is essential to the future of our state and nation, whereas the people of Missouri have a long tradition of support for public education and their local school districts, whereas local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative governance of public school districts, whereas local school boards, acting on behalf of and in close connection with the people of their communities, chart the direction of education in their communities, whereas local school boards serve as the key community advocate for children, youth, and public schools. Now thereof, March 1, Governor Parsons, State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim March 2024 to be School Board Recognition Month. Thank you for your efforts to all of our children and citizens of Missouri. We have a few more things here, too. Dave, your disky time. Is it appropriate for them to look? Can they be peeked at?
Yes, please do. There's actually a lot in the envelope, so if the size is inappropriate, right, it looks smaller, and I have to replace it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you from the staff and obviously the kids, too. Working you. No, no, we're not.
All right. It's not about us, it's about kids, let's move on. Nobody spoken public comments? Nobody signed up? Okay, middle school presentation, Ms. Backus.
So we'll go ahead and start by recognizing our sub of this semester. Ms. Matt, you're from Dorney. So Ms. Matt comes to us all the way from New York and blesses us with her presence in Wright City with her loving dogs that she checks on during lunch period and talks about them immensely with her students, and the way that you connect with our students is truly special. And our students talk about that, they recognize it, and we thank you.
What part of New York do you hail from?
Manhattan, Brooklyn.
Well, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next part of our presentation is I am going to hand it over to Dr. Skelly, and we're going to introduce our National Junior Honor Society.
Good evening. I'm here to present about our newest organization at Wright City Middle School, the National Junior Honor Society. And it is one of the oldest organizations in the United States to recognize our academically talented students. We started our chapter on February 19th when we inducted 22 members, and I'm the advisor, and our faculty council is made up of Mrs. Allison Barnhart, Dr. Deborah Heisler, Ms. Jennifer Schumacher, Mr. David Schnell, and Mrs. Janie Wilkins. And now we have a few of our students here. Drake Rumens is going to introduce our purpose.
The purpose of this chapter shall be to create enthusiastic scholarship, to stimulate a desire to render service, to promote leadership, to develop character, and to encourage good citizenship for the students of Wright City Middle School.
So in order to become a member of National Junior Honor Society, the students had to attend for the first full semester. So we have students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that are eligible, and then they also had to have a GPA of 3.0 or above. And then those students, which was approximately 160 students, were given an application to fill out and then also get a teacher recommendation. And then the faculty council and other faculty members looked over their applications and determined if they were worthy to become members. And so of that original group of about 160 students, we had 55 that were eligible and were inducted. And now our students are going to introduce the pillars of the National Junior Honor Society, and Reagan Graham is going to speak about the scholarship. Yael Martinez Perez is going to introduce service.
Service. Service seeking out an engaging and meaningful service and voluntary, not seeking to act of service to fulfill a school, district, or program requirements or to collect hours.
Drake is going to introduce leadership.
Leadership. Leadership is carrying oneself with dignity and taking ownership and responsibility for one's own actions and contributions.
Dylan Worlance is going to introduce character.
Character. Character is valuing diverse cultures and building relationships that reflect love of self but also concern for others. It is about the personal commitment to ethical and compassionate decision-making that affects oneself and others.
Adolfo Wunderlich will introduce our fifth pillar, citizenship.
Citizenship. Citizenship is accepting one's place in all of the community and seeking to understand the concerns and interests of that community.
I pledge the pledge. I pledge to uphold...
I pledge to uphold...
...the high purposes of the National Junior Honor Society...
The high purposes of the National Junior Honor Society...
...to which I've been selected...
To which I've been selected...
...I will be true to the principles for which it stands...
I will be true to the principles for which it stands...
...and will maintain and encourage...
And will maintain and encourage...
...high standards of scholarship...
High standards of scholarship...
...service...
Service.
Leadership...
Leadership.
Character...
Character.
And citizenship.
And citizenship.
This is a list of our newest inductees. So there are 55 students there, and then there's a few pictures after that. That was our induction ceremony on February 19th. We have a great group of students that represent Wright City Middle School very well. And during our induction ceremony, each student received their certificate of membership, and they also signed our register.
Hey, Matt, could you shut the door, please?
Sure will.
That was awesome. I think that's, those kids deserve that round of applause. Okay, next item on the agenda is the new Wright City High School and East Edition updates, Dr. Berger.
Great, let's start with Art. Art's here from Monarch Tech. Can you give us a little update on East Elementary for Matt?
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Berger. Just wanted to let you know we're pretty close to the end here with the addition at East Elementary. The punch list has been dragging on, but we're down to about $24,000 that we owe Aspire once they finish. The signage is almost complete. There's some minor HVAC work, they're adjusting the filters, some minor mill work, I think that went in last week on the bottoms of the shelves. Doors and hardware are being installed, hardware on a lot of the doors are still being corrected. The grating and seating has been completed. The sink is now functioning properly, and ceilings have been corrected. Aspire will be sending us the punch list, and we'll go through it one more time and make sure everything's in before we do clear the final payment, so.
Any questions for Dr. Berger? Okay, next, please.
All right, I'm a high school, Penn City for Bobby Christopher Keaton. Keaton, or Bobby, your last name? I'm more afraid to pronounce it than I can remember it, but yeah. Welcome.
All right, so we got some ongoing site activities right now. Earthwork on the other side of the creek to establish the baseball softball field. Turf install coming to a close here. Trying to ramp up some site paving while we got the, some other windows. Capitorium should be wrapping up here in the next couple of weeks. Spray installation is ongoing as we, comes available. Interior framing and hanging also, as it becomes available as well. Overhead piping and duct work, just kind of an ongoing thing throughout the project. Interior electric, same thing. And then brick veneer is in full force, and then classic glazing just mobilized about two weeks ago. So it's, we got about 25% of it installed already, so. Then looking forward is interior painting, installation of casework should be coming here in the next probably two months. Architectural sheet metal, they just started here in the first area here last week. Installation of flooring will be coming up here in the next month or two. Track and field events, they, once the turf is wrapped up, we'll get that, start the throwing events and stuff like that. And then baseball softball field, they just got it down to the earthwork side, and we just got the drainage and stuff in there, so that should be coming on rather quickly. And then next week, we're starting to see the entire site, so that is available. It's not distributed. So this is just site paving and sidewalks, just a big pour from our concrete saw, and starting to get the sidewalks in to take shape around the site. So this was a couple of weeks ago, but the, this is the turf padding, all the gray is the under, I guess it'd be the carpet pad essentially is what it is, and the turf goes right over the top of that. They're probably about 95% done with the turf at this point. Here's another good picture of the turf install. Like I said, this was a couple of weeks ago, so it is pretty close now. Just the big connector, it's a big long hallway coming from the area E going to the capitorium down there on the east side of there. Just giving the steel structure up, and obviously the major walls are going full height. This is the west elevation, looking from Ralca Road. It's the front entrance right there. South elevation. Southeast elevation, kind of working around the building here. North elevation. East elevation here. The electrical switchgear delivered on 35. So I bring those good news. They got about five more big runs to pull, and we should be going live with all the panels here as it becomes available.
And then Dr. Berger asked you to address some additional items over there?
Yeah. So we had about almost two inches of rain the other day, and had some water running over the retaining wall there on Fast Lane. The BMPs were in place. The steel fence did not fail, it was running over the top of that stuff, so we got everything corrected and moving forward with that. Long jump, triple jump, got an option from the contractor, doesn't seem like a very viable option at this point, so we're looking to try to work some other avenues there. It's pretty costly at this point, I don't have a rough dollar figure, but it is pretty substantial. And then I guess the, we did have some siltation on the track, got that addressed, but it's still fenced down on the toe of the hill, so we got that all addressed, and the contractor took care of cleaning that up, and obviously he had to put a lot of pocket for that, but we got that taken care of, so there's no issues with any kind of turf install at this point.
You want to add anything, Dr. Berger?
No, we have, I also have a change order pending, so you might want to...
Well, let's get some questions here for us. Let's do the change order. Any questions for Wright Construction?
Just real quick on the silk filter for irrigation, when seeding grass gets in, I assume the problem will fully remedy itself in the future?
Yeah, once it's stabilized, and obviously we have the BMPs in place with filter fabrics and stuff over that, so once that goes fully live, all that, the filtration will get removed, and then it should be able to dissipate as needed.
Was there any damage on Fast Lane to any of those property owners there?
I don't think so. We ramped it down there to make sure that everything was addressed. We did have part of the fence kind of was damaged from that last windstorm, so we got that taken care of. We end up, there's no mud or anything coming across there onto the Fast Lane.
Why'd you call this? Is that going to remedy that?
Yeah, once we stabilize...
Are we going to constantly always have trouble with that?
I'm not 100% sure. I can't, I can't say for certain. Obviously, I'll get the design, and we can kind of make sure, but the way it's designed, you know, they obviously took that into consideration, so there should not be any issues after that.
Yeah, I think the optimistic view of it is, the way I've kind of... Yeah, I think the optimistic view of it is, the way I've kind of thirty thousand foot viewed this and said it in the construction trailer again today is Our engineering was not even activated. I mean, everything was runoff. Nothing hit the basin, retention basin. And so for a two-inch event, I was very worried there was going to be more damage particularly off-site, you know, or obviously on-site too, but We really get bothered if it bothers our neighbors, but like I said, I was optimistic that actually Dr. Way was the first one on-site for us. There's no water in the retention basin, and so I immediately started putting it together that that wasn't even in play. And that was because of all the erosion control was actually creating these dams where it couldn't get to the drop in, was to get to the retention basin. So I think I'm feeling, it sounds crazy, but feeling pretty good after that event, even despite the runoff and despite maybe knocking down one of our new fences.
Are these silk filters removed at project completion or a certain milestone?
At project completion.
And you kind of touched on that issue with the track. You said that came in higher than you thought it would be?
I was just, yeah, we're trying to work some avenues there. What we had figured was just the long jump and triple jump. There's the periphery around it, you know, moving a plate off or electric or anything like that was not kind of forced, so we're trying to go back to the drawing board, trying to get some other ideas to try to accommodate that.
I think Dr. Berger might be able to address that just a little bit more. You want? Yeah, just to say that what the number that was, because you know, they were coming back into the field, And the number that came to us, and they didn't even include the big number, was more than what we wanted to, it wasn't a number that we could tolerate. So, and also, there were some problems with that issue too, cramming the, and I had even asked Art, you get in here and help, I know you had your hands on this too, but That was going to try to cram in another long triple jump inside the track. And so a better option that we concluded when we got the first number, we didn't even like the first number on it, And also the complications that we're going to, that it was going to create within the track, we thought we need to do what Other school districts that have been recently constructed did and put the long triple jump outside of the track. And that takes away, but still in close proximity there to that D-zone, and so that's what we've asked Bond to try to draw up. We should have that, well, no doubt we'll have that ready for the April board, for board consideration. And I think in the end, we'll have even a better, I mean, it'll be a fraction, I'll say fraction, a fraction of the cost of the first proposal, And actually, in the end, potentially, we will get three long triple jumps instead of the one that we currently have, so I think it'll be a good option. I'm very confident it's going to be cheaper.
And I have a favor to ask. I'm about three inches shorter because I keep getting hit on top of the head. I know there's a bunch of trash that's going on to the Fast Lane property, and I know it's not on purpose. I think what's happened is the guys and the gals are putting their stuff in the back of their pickup trucks, and then it's blowing out. If we could just wash the trash a little bit, just kind of be a good neighbor, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
I have a quick question. You said that sediment ponds, I guess, are, what do we call them? Retention basins? Retention basins. They're not really going to come online until the project is complete. Is that what I heard you say?
They're having all the swip and erosion control is, that gets removed at the end of the project, but they are active as.
But I thought we're diverting water from them now, is that correct?
The silk filter got clogged, so the water ran off property and settled into the retention basin.
So we, there's waddles around like every area inlet, and it, the water rolls over the top of that at a very, it triples, so it keeps all the mud on our job site. So it just didn't get into the basin as quickly, and obviously it was a two-inch rain, you know, for like, you know, hour and a half or two hours, and it just ran off as fast as it could.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, when will the retention basin be ready to be at full capacity, ready to be used? So like, if we get a two-inch rain tomorrow, we can almost expect the same outcome, correct?
Correct.
And when, what time period do you say we can get a two-inch rain and not have that problem?
Not for certain on that, but I mean, once we get the basins completely, all that the sea, you know, established, and, you know, the grass is grown in there, And we've got to put concrete swales in the bottom of every detention basin as well to kind of divert the water there. Once that all goes live, then there should be no issues after that.
I see. Thank you. Keaton, what do you think the proximity?
We're starting to seed next week, and we got until like May thirteenth, so we're going to try to get everything seeded that's available at this time. We just got to get the concrete swale put in on the bottom of that detention basin and kind of clean out the sediment that's already there, and then you should be able to attack that, so. Hopefully within the next six weeks or so.
Okay, fair enough. I would just have to look at.
Well, the thing is, we're coming up to rainy season.
Well, yeah, I didn't know if it was going to be six weeks or six months.
I know.
It's going to be well before the projects start opening.
Any other questions for Dr. Berger? Thank you very much for your time. Next item is the change orders that Chris wants to go through, so you want to go ahead and do that, please?
I'm going to have Keaton go through the, or Keaton or Bond go through the change orders. Bond's on the creek. Just put up that summary page, and that way the board can see those, and if you have any questions on each, I know you've been memozed on them, and then also I know you pre-beat them too.
So change order fifty-nine is a rip rapple vented blanket at the detention basin just south of the track and field. It's just a large rock that has to go run the overflow. It's required for the PFPSP. The pit drain is a stationary loading dock. Once we got the shop drawings back, they required a drain to go into the concrete, The press slab that the docks had said. So this is a requirement from them. Sixty-two is the baseball field scoreboard, electric, entrenching. That's just essentially running electric to the scoreboard out there at the football field. Revision thirty-four is a credit for the makeup air unit at the pre-engineering metal building down at the football field. That was just a value engineering option. Essentially, it was, first it was going to be gas-fired makeup air unit, and then now it's all electric. So we didn't have the full gas directly from the building and route it all the way down there. We already got the means to do that. Sixty-six is the access panels at the interstitial spaces, so the way the trusses are designed, we have a smoke barrier, drywall smoke barrier, And the firefighters, the fire marshal required us to put an access panel in so he can see above the drywall, so he can check for fires. And then PCO sixty-nine is the hammer and gas requirements. Once we got, started getting hammer and on board to pull the gas line to job site, They have a housekeeping pad, just a concrete slab that they required, along with some electrical, dedicated electrical phone line, Analog phone line, and a dedicated wire to a control panel so they can monitor their meter remote.
Any questions on the change orders, Dr. Berger?
How is P O sixty-nine not captured when we went out to our utilities for pricing on the project in RP?
Cameron?
It's for the hammer and gas.
Oh. I don't have a good enough answer for you. Sorry.
Could you run through your credit one more time?
Yep.
What that covered?
So it's the, you guys, the pre-engineering metal building, the football field, it's the locker room, the storage building. Originally, whenever they put the design out, it was for gas, the gas-fired makeup air unit to heat and cool the building. And the only gas line is coming from the building itself, right, you know, on the north side. So we have to run a gas line dedicated from the building all the way down to the football field, which would have been extremely costly. So then we elected, you know, we talked to the design team, and then they went to the all electric, and it was a credit of forty-five thousand.
Okay.
So basically, we're going from gas to electric, so our electric bill is going to go up.
Right.
That's what I've heard. That's what I heard now. So instead of, we're going to save that forty-five thousand now in order to force a buy when I need electric. That's what I heard. Any other questions on the change orders? So the only question to you, I'm assuming we had two million, a three million dollar contingency? Which one, two, three?
Almost three.
Okay, so basically, we're going to be a third of the way through our contingency.
Yeah.
And are you happy with that?
Yeah.
You need to concern?
What's the?
The total percent ring out here at one point five percent total change on the total project, which is well below industry standard.
Feeling pretty good?
So, so far, so good.
Every month that goes by, I feel a little bit better.
Okay, that's good. Okay, good. So we're good doing low contingency from a financial perspective, and then we're, so we don't see much.
We're currently at one point there, or will be after this.
You're currently standing at one point four, or one point five, or something.
Okay. Any questions on the change orders?
We'll get an answer for you on that pad, though.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the change order is presented. There's a motion and second to accept the change order is presented. Any more discussion? Before we do that, I want to make an announcement that Erin has joined via Zoom. What time did she join?
Six thirty-five.
So she joined at six thirty-five. So Erin?
Yes.
Do you have any questions regarding the change order?
I do not. I was listening in for all the questions in the presentation. Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, so there will be seven people voting on this, just FYI. So any more discussion on the change order? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, I heard seven zero. Okay. Anything else from the high school in the east before we let these gentlemen go? Stay safe tomorrow. Okay, next item on the agenda is the calendar. Dr. Berger?
I have a presentation here and a ask. If we get through the presentation, I'll certainly go back to these slides the board needs to, While I try to kind of encompass the topic all in this presentation. We'll start off with our calendar committee. Next slide, please. These first few slides, I'll try to blow through fairly quickly. I will say on this slide, talking about the process, really just in layman's terms, we pulled this tower, the salary, the, it's very similar in salary committee, but The calendar committee, we pulled them together. We look at the previous year's survey, we discuss whether we want to put, you know, ask any other questions moving into the, to the this year's survey. We push that survey out, to have all staff, comes back, and the calendar committees convene again. We go through the surveys, make recommendations, and that's how, kind of the overview of our process. And then just looking briefly back to last year, you'll remember, we had three versions, and there was a lot of discussion that, maybe the next slide. We actually kind of split option one and option two, so there was an effort to try to get this down to, if we could get this In the committee process, to get this down to two options. We're successful in doing that, and really, the calendar Process was easier this year, just the way the calendar fell out. Certainly Veronica and Elizabeth had a big role in helping me put all this together, but. So you can see the differences there, and option A really comes down to, are you going to shorten fall break, or are you going to shorten winter break?
And options, so go back there for a second. So So they actually, so option A is ultimately the one you want us to approve? Option A is going to be the one that I recommend?
Yeah.
Okay, so kids and Halloween. Are you teachers prepared for that?
It's Han or Halloween.
November one, we want us that way around. I love fun.
The day after is great.
The day after, the day after? So basically, you would be, so the kids wouldn't be in session on November first? So you're okay with, okay.
Is that insight coming from a long time on the board or having a wife that's an elementary teacher?
Yes.
I think the comment maybe was that either way, they're going to have a party days.
Okay, all right. As long as everybody's okay with that, October first.
So option A wins out, and, next slide, please, by the staff. And here are the key dates of that option A. Won't read those through, but there's a slide there for reference for those key dates. Okay, go back one, please. So pretty easy process going through, you know, two options, A wins out sixty percent. We're always going to have probably near, you know, near that split on just about any option that we put out there. And then I want to set up the next topic or the big change for this calendar. So this goes back to our study group, even our master plan study group. And at that time, we have been confronted for the last several years, but I would say this year more than, more than years past, On the onset of four-day calendars among our states. There's five, over five hundred school districts in the state, and there's almost two hundred now that'll do a four-day. So we try to get that conversation in the appropriate place, but how that kind of flowed into other topics where Climate study perpetually comes back that staff need more time. So if you remember during that master plan, kind of connecting these for you, hopefully, That is also what drove us through the study group, but also through recommendation of the administration, To make that late start Monday and giving our staff fifteen more minutes, so of prep time, so collaboration time. So we felt like that was one thing we could do to answer that, that we see again always on the climate study, that our teachers need more time. So from even going back as far back as the study group, but again, that conversation kind of continues that, that teachers are just pressed. So what we said was, we're going to look at that during the calendar committee, and we did. And what we found in the calendar committee is that We currently go well above the minimum hours of a thousand and forty-four. So you can see what, in east-west, eleven hundred and four, middle school, eleven twenty-one, high school, eleven twenty-nine. So what we discussed were, would there be a possibility the board would consider one or two days that were non-student contact days? One for each semester possibly, and what would that do on our minimum hours? So the next slide shows that if we went to a hundred and sixty-nine day calendar, what that does, you can see there at west and east, still well above the thousand and forty-four. Middle school, and if you look at that, the high school there, I think it was eighty-five hours still above the minimums. Eighty-five hours at the high school above the thousand and forty-four. So we felt like, from the committee, but also from the administration, and really, a driving factor in that decision is Where are we academically now? We certainly don't want to do anything that would risk academic achievement. But we felt like we were in a place where we could ask the board to consider this And give our teachers two more days of still doing work, so there's no recommendation To drop the contract days of the teachers or anything. This would just be two days that students weren't in session, that teachers would have as workdays. So felt like, you know, that also combined with the fifteen minutes that we're giving them each Monday Was at least something we wanted to bring the board and ask them to consider. Go to the next slide, please. If the board does consider that, we also got feedback from our staff on that too. And so if that were to occur, it'd be September twentieth of the first semester, if you would, and then a second one would follow on February twenty-eighth. And that's if the board, you know.
So what days of the week is September twentieth and?
Fridays.
Fridays.
And the last slide?
Dr. Berger, basically collaboration days or PD days?
PD days, but I won't say that they couldn't be a mix of both, but we're going in thinking PD days, yeah. In fact, Dr. Way, you look like you want to say something to that? We also, you know, one thing we've been doing, I would say that these days would be open for that too, would be we also want to, you know, we want structured PD, professional development. Collaboration is a hustle. As soon as you get in there, it's a hustle. But what our teachers also need is, they need to make their own priority for some time, so I can see these days having a block of time that is, what is your priority as the teacher? For an elementary teacher, that might be going and doing the board on the wall, you know, the bulletin board. Just what is your priority? And that's, we hear that a lot from our teachers too, that there's a lot of stuff that's draconian, of course, And certainly, we've made a lot of ground in the last three or four years, and it hasn't been hard, so now we feel like we're in a place where we can relieve the pressure just a little bit. Go to the next slide. Yeah, okay. So we're recommending moving the calendar to a hundred and sixty-nine, But I can tell you, I said to the committee, and everyone in the committee would be able to attest to this, that we know this is a big decision for the board. One day is great. If we can, two is wonderful, and we think we're ready for that, the administration thinks we're ready for that. But also just an appreciation that you would consider this, because we know this is, puts a big one on the board to grind over, so. I'll try to answer any questions the board has, me or my colleagues will.
I dug your nose off the top of your head, and I'm just curious, what the average student contact days per year, per district is? contact days per year, per district is in the state?
No, and I won't give you a long commentary on it. I don't know. I will say that, you know, kind of a conversation that I believe it's Austin and I had was, why do school districts go above 1,044 anyway? And it was really, oh, it wasn't. That was Mr. White. So this has been a popular topic. It really was based on, we used to have a day mandate of 1,044, or excuse me, of 174. And if you went a, you know, seven and a half hour day, you went well above the hour minimum. So whenever I first came to central office, it wasn't unusual to see 12, 12:50 across the state, because everybody had to go 174 days. Now you manipulate that a little bit by doing half-days and get it down a little bit, but nobody was near the minimum. What I would caution the board and make, with a little hesitation here, but, you know, we still go well above the minimum. I think whenever you're starting to work, and that's what your four-day schools do. If you looked at four-day calendars, typically they are very close to 1,044, maybe just a single-digit hours above it, just to give themselves just a little bit of leeway. And, you know, I think that the, there is research being gathered on that. It's just, we haven't been doing it long enough. So I have hesitation, and my staff knows that, or at least any staff member who's ever asked me, knows I have hesitation with a full-blown four-day. But could there be two days as a give of student contact days to give our teachers more time to work, whether that be professional development, collaboration, or just their priority? I think we're in a place to do that. I really do. I'm very confident in that. Just like that.
I would support the two days.
If our teachers, I mean, if this is what they want and what they believe they need to be better, I would, Beth, I support it. I, I go back and forth on lessening the days for our kids, but I've sat here for 10 years and every year I've seen, we go way past our neighbors. So I'm in support of it, for our teachers.
Okay, we'll start. Erin, I'll let you get settled. So Mary, you want to try to?
I don't know if this is fair or right or right. We have our future superintendent sitting here who's going to inherit this. I just, in fact, we didn't introduce her. We should have introduced you before to say you were here, and we thank you for being here and clearing your schedule. Just wondering what your feelings are on it.
Well, I was not prepared for that question. But, but I appreciate you asking. I think anytime you support your teachers and support the voice of our teachers, it helps kids. And when teachers are prepared and they feel less stressed and they're able to adequately prepare for our students, I think our students benefit from that time. Teachers have a lot on their plate. You know, there's a lot of expectations, and I think when you support your teachers, you support your kids. And when we see the voice of our teachers, I would too, that would be my recommendation, that we support our teachers, and that ultimately because they're getting more time. And when you prepare more for a lesson or you put more into it, the benefactor is our students. And we should see, you know, some gains from that, because if they're preparing and working hard and ultimately, our kids, they benefit.
Thank you, and I'm sorry if I put you.
No, that's okay.
Ms. Mary, may I add, and I'll put her on the spot again. I have had individual conversations, probably to a nose, with our board members regarding four-day. So I know Dr. Salwa was not, you know, aware of that, but I think I'll take the liberty and see if she acknowledges this. We are probably in the same place, in our opinion, on a four-day. You know, we believe in local control, but, but is it, you know, I don't want to be on the cutting edge, sure don't want to be on the bleeding edge of the four-days. And so I'm very comfortable seeing where this goes, seeing where society goes, and maybe we follow one day, but, and I don't even consider this, I mean, it's a step towards less days, but I don't consider this a step towards four-day. And maybe that will leave before the board one day, and I know it's, it has in the past come up, come around, but I think we're pretty synced up on that, that with the four-day. Here I am conflating the two things, which I hate when we do.
Thank you.
Dave?
I'm all for the 169 days. I think that's, I think we owe our teachers that, those extra days each semester, and I don't think it's going to hurt the direction that we're trying to move even a little bit. So I'm good with it.
Kyle, you have another question you wanted to ask, probably about your team.
Oh, no. I absolutely support this too. You know, if there's a concern with losing two contact days with students over this, I think there are other kinds of days in our calendars that we could take a look at. Mainly the AMI days, but everybody knows my opinion on four-days, and I don't want to bleed out to them either. Just out of curiosity, what district, large district at the east of us right now, what are, which ones are implementing them next year? Okay, so still.
Fox, I don't know that they've done it. I know they're, they're considering, I don't know if they've approved it. McDonald County in southwest Missouri was the big buzz while it was at Massa this week. They did approve it, and it was rejected. And McDonald County is not a giant district, but I'm going to guess 5,000. St. Joe did reject it, and that was a district about, from memory, 10,000 or 12,000. And I, you know, usually whenever it's went through the process and goes to the board, we've seen the board accept those, you know. So that St. Joe was, was a surprise. But I, did you, were you able to see it?
They're discussing it.
They're still discussing. I thought they were still.
Yeah, I think it's this board meeting.
Because that's obviously my concern, you know. Barger, Diggs, Stricks implemented, and we already can't compete then. It's very difficult for us to compete as now they implemented that, all that's real.
You know, the thing about four-day, what I will say is, it's harder to increase your test scores and your student learning with a four-day week. I mean, look at Warrenton. I mean, and look at, you know, and look at Montgomery County, they're four-days. And they're having a lot more trouble. And that's the data in front of us, is those districts are having a lot more trouble versus us, five-day, and look where our scores are. So, and look where our student achievement is. So I would think, you know, that more, what I don't want to happen with this is, I don't want to go, I don't want to come next year 167 and 165. That, that is what I don't want to see. So, you know, I'm fully, I'm for this, but what I don't want to see is, okay, well, I want 167, 165, and, you know, that's when you start, you know, that's when it starts impacting student achievement and student learning.
And nothing would clue the board in a year or three years, if you saw, you know, if you saw a drop in student performance, if you, you know, through process, it could point to this being part of that problem, you could go back to 171, 174, whatever, whatever you wish to do. So you're not locked into this, and this board is great. It always has been about not making knee-jerk reactions, but certainly I think that would be a play. Okay, we did this, we saw this dip. Let's, let's go through that process to see how much of a factor we think that had. So you're not, you're not locked into this forever.
I, Beth hasn't had an opportunity, so go ahead.
Yeah, I think everyone's said what needed to be said. I support it. I think, I agree with Dr. Salwa. What's good for our teachers is inherently good for our kids, and it would be helpful for them to have those touch points. I think it's beneficial for the kids too, so I support it.
Okay, Erin, you get the last word.
Okay, great. So our kids do best when they're in, when they're in a classroom in front of or behind, whatever. Great teachers, our great staff, they're, and so I am always hesitant to take time away from that. I want our kids in the classroom as much as possible. I want our kids in front of our staff as much as possible. So, you know, I'm always hesitant to lose student contact days. Because just what, what Austin was saying, what we've seen since we've taken, since some school districts have taken away student contact days, is that their performance has dropped. Now, saying all that, our, our teachers are fantastic and they absolutely, you know, just like anybody, any, any profession, and these are highly skilled professionals, can use some more time. I would just, so one, I'm, I'm always struggling with when we take away student contact days. Two, I would stress that this is still a day that's being paid by taxpayers, so that needs to be a day that is being used and not like, oh, it's no student day, so it's, now it becomes a half-day, or, you know, something like that. Absolutely, you've got things to do in your room and grades, you know, all of the, all of the amazing things that, that our folks do, but I would hate to see it get taken advantage of and it not be used for what this board is intending it for.
Understood. Yep. Okay, any other comments before we make a motion in a, in a second? Okay, I need a motion to approve the 2425 option A-169 calendar is presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
I heard Beth seconded it, only because she's sitting next to me. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I heard 7-0. 24 budget amendment number two, Dr. Berger.
Yeah, we're going to throw this to Ms. Klaus, who's with us tonight.
Hello. Good evening. Well, first I want to start by saying thank you guys for all you do for the dedication to our staff and students here in Wright's School District. For our budget amendment number two, we increased salaries about, or revenues about $481,000. A big part of it is due to earnings on investments. Interest rates are still continuing to stay pretty high, and we've still, quite a bit of money is still invested. We also, the, the school breakfast and lunch program saw a huge increase as well, and that was due to a $60,000 payment from Desi's Food and Nutrition Supply Chain Assistance Program. And that was due to disruptions in the supply chain, which included price increases and product shortages. We also increased Medicaid revenue by $40,000 for reimbursements received for direct services to eligible children and allowable administrative planning. Then on the expense side, we increased approximately $471,000. $159,000 of that was for technology switching at the new high school. $50,000 for insurance increases for property values, payroll, and work comp qualifiers. Then we also had several students that required speech testing and services this year, so we had to increase that budget about $30,000. Then we had a couple of mid-year resignations that had us increase our subs' salaries to cover those long-term subs in those positions. Any questions?
So about a net of $10,000?
Exactly.
Is that supply chain payment expected to happen again, or that was a one and out?
I have not heard, so I'm not sure. I was kind of surprised when I got it, actually. I had to do some research. I'm like, what is this?
What is this tech for?
Any other questions for Veronica? Okay, I need a motion to approve the FY24 budget amendment number two is presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I heard 7-0.
Mr. President, for your next motion, I meant to say this, but I wanted to thank Veronica. She has been a hawk for the last 10 or 15 years of my career. Investments have been nothing. The interest rates have been nothing. And she's done an exceptional job. In fact, we worked, she worked, I say she reported to me today some further work that she's done on our temporary investments, and it's just really impressive, because she's even down to the level, you know, we build out an investment, it's basically a CD ladder, but our call for our payouts, we're not as aggressive as we had projected, and so she's even taking that net amount and reinvesting that. So she's just doing a really good job of getting at her pinning we can through that. Now that there is some interest, we don't like interest rates sometimes, but when we're at best, then we definitely like them. So one public knowledge, thank you very much for your efforts. You didn't need an applause.
Okay, middle school, before-school childcare, Dr. Berger.
And I am not blindsided, Dr. Way. We did practice this.
So folks, at our last meeting, you guys talked about a couple needs that we have to have for Monday late start, the 7:15 time, and then also looking at the possibility of covering some before care for fifth and sixth graders. So we did send out a survey, we had some numbers, so I just want to briefly talk about kind of how this might look in August. If you look at our survey numbers, we estimate from the survey, and again, it's a survey that was taken in March for something that's going to happen in September, so bear with us, we're thinking about 70 kiddos, might come to that at East, 90 at West, and about 37 in middle school might use this before care on Monday mornings. If that's the case, we anticipate staffing of four staff members at East, four at West, and two over at middle school. As far as possible activities, you know, we are going to offer them breakfast. They won't have to wait till all the other kiddos come in. If you go to the next slide, Elizabeth. We really don't have a lot of homework at the elementary level, so we're thinking maybe like library time and then free play, whether that's inside or outside, depending on the season. We do anticipate having homework help from middle school, because they usually have more of that. Or middle school kids might just want to hang out in the cafeteria and get on their phones. And so we're going to offer physical activity as well, breakfast for them. So we should have some things in place. And again, we are looking at, whether it's East, West, or middle school, honoring that 7:15 start time. If you go down to the last slide, we always talk about projected financial cost, kind of worst-case scenario, we anticipate this costing us about $11,000. We, we were adding up some bolts this morning, and we were talking about some possibilities, moving staff, what that would look like. So again, worst-case scenario is about $11,000 in order to cover this. Kind of next steps, we have online enrollment coming out in about a week or two. Before that, we want to have something on there to kind of lock in our parents that, yes, they are going to use this service, or no, they're not. And then maybe getting with Morgan to find out, hey, what can we send out to parents about what this is going to look like, and what kind of commitment we need from you, and what time you want to drop off? And can I drop off after 7:15, or does it have to be 7:15? All those good things. So those are things we're going to be working on the next couple weeks when we get back from spring break.
Beth, any questions?
Can we remind you again where we landed with school bus pickup on Monday mornings? It's first timing?
As far as what time they're going to start?
Right, right. When we starting, so there's no, there's no school bus pickup to bring kids to the childcare, right? They would run at the moment, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this would be parents dropping off at 7:15 or after.
This was, thanks to address that concern, I got to get to work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
First morning. Yeah, okay.
And to be honest with you, we've already met with Echo Ride once. We are meeting with them in two weeks, because we are looking at a couple different options of what that's going to look like. We also are looking at an option of, if we move to the new high school mid-year, what's that going to look like? If we have to bus kids over to the old high school for activities in winter in high school? So they're starting to get some, some ideas in mind on how to help us with that. Plus, they're talking about our need for additional assets, because if we grow another 100 kids or so, what does that look like? We have about 60% of our kids ride the buses, so we don't have all of that worked out with them yet, but we're at our meeting again in about two weeks.
Yeah, I appreciate that we put the survey out. My vote to move to Monday late start was a reluctant one, but I, my primary driver was I didn't want us to run into a situation where we had fifth graders who are early out Wednesdays with no place to go, so this makes sense. But like I said at our, our last meeting, every parent that contacted me with a concern, it was a concern with their younger middle school students and what would they do on Monday morning? So I'm certainly in favor of trying this and offering the childcare at the middle school level.
Anything else, Deb? Dave, anything?
Do we have a metric in place that whenever we get to X amount of kids, we're going to not do it?
Yeah, so that was one of the conversations we had. I mean, I think if we offered it year one, it's going to be hard to drop it. If we did, it would probably be a semester. You know, our real concern is that fifth and sixth grade. You know, what we see in other buildings and other districts is that, yeah, we might have 30 on paper, 37, but is there seven that come? Is there 15? You know, do we continue to have that? And so those are decisions will, will obviously come to you. But I think if we start the year, you know, we're going to try to finish the year.
I mean, I wholeheartedly support it. I think it's great, but I think when there's. But I think when there's two kids coming to middle school.
Yep.
Right. You, you've got to be able to cut the cord sometime, right? Like.
And we'll keep you informed on that. We'll keep you informed on numbers and stuff. Or we'll just have to switch around some of our staffing to accommodate. But it might be something that we, we offer for this year and as it dwindles, then maybe we don't offer it.
Which is not used.
Mary?
I really have no questions. I just, I forgot to take the words out of my mouth. That's my concern too, was fifth graders. We already have a problem with the early release in the middle school. And now you're going to younger set of kids and then. So, you know, that was my concern too. I appreciate you working on this and getting this, this childcare in place.
Yeah, we're just going to have to work on staffing. That's our big concern right now. And so we got a couple of options, but we'll have some employees and out to parents soon here.
Thank you.
I have no further comments. I thank you guys for putting this together and sending the survey out.
Kyle, any further comments?
Also, thank you for running this down in the last month or so. And I know that you're in the weeds on the bus situation for next year. So look forward to that when it's ready to review.
Aaron?
No, just thank you for getting it all together. Appreciate it.
Hey, did it for me. Okay, so I need a motion to expand before school childcare to fifth, in sixth grade, starting at 7:15 a.m. Starting in the 2425 school year, which I guess will be August 20th.
So, second.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Set May and June board meetings. Dr. Berger, you want to give us the dates of your motion, please?
Yes, I'll fill that up. I'm sorry. I got to get out of that. So we're going to propose for the May, Board of Education meeting will be on May 23rd. And Elizabeth, Elizabeth Moniker will be here, and if I misspeak, that is the fourth Thursday. What that will allow is a couple of things. Is one is right now we are conflicting with Francis House board meetings. So this will give Dr. Salvin opportunity to attend. It'll also allow Mr. Smith and I to attend fifth grade camp. And they are always in dire need of male chaperone, chaperones. So if we can move that one to the fourth Thursday. And then of course, in June, we're always looking at budget workshop. And then of course, the regular meeting. That June 4th meeting is a Tuesday and that June 27th is a Thursday. And I know I see the calendars up, so perhaps the president can just facilitate a coordination of those.
Anybody have any issues or concerns with those dates?
27th is a Thursday, June 27th.
And June 8th?
Fourth is a Tuesday.
And the fourth is Tuesday.
That says June 8th.
It says June 4th.
Responding date. Oh, sorry. I was going to.
We all did that. We all did that Kyle, Austin and I earlier today.
Okay. Any concerns with those dates? Once, twice? So, I need a motion to schedule the May BOE meeting for the May 23rd. And the June BOE meeting for June, meetings for June 4th for workshop. And June 27th for the regularly scheduled board meeting where the budget will be approved.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Safety evaluation. I'm guessing this is Jeremy?
Yes.
Dr. Way, please.
Elizabeth, you go to page two of it. I always like to kind of talk about what we've done in the last 12 months. And so I go to page two, it says changes made following last evaluation. So the first one, number one there underneath for West, that was part of our five-year facility plan. These were, we put five exterior doors in at West. And if you see, one of the big things is the panels on the side. If you, if you remember the, the doors at West, there was glass on either side of them. It makes it easier for people to get in. And again, the biggest thing is just distance and time. And so we're just trying to keep people away from other people and as much time as possible away. So we've put five exterior doors in at West. We also did rekeying of all that. So if there's any unaccounted or unwanted keys out there that are not functional anymore. We add some LED lighting at the back of the gym and the old PAT classrooms. And then some lighting at the parking lot for some of the safety at West. If you go to the bus garage, one of the big things with that is we did, we completed the fencing project. And we're really trying to keep our Echo Ride employees in one area and then only the buses in the bus pen. You know, that, that pen's been there since like 1980 something. And so sooner or later with us getting more assets, we're going to have to expand that. So we want to make sure that we utilize all of that right now. So we've moved them outside and then added some lighting because those bus drivers are there early in the morning and late at night. So done that. Brian Cahoon is, is pretty much helped us with the new high school as far as working with vendors on some new keying systems. And then also the FOB system that's still in the works. We've had a couple of meetings already. But we should have more to report as we get closer to the new high school coming online. As you know, we had the safety grant where we kind of isolated buzz-in systems. We had two of our buzz-in systems, one at early childhood and one at middle school. That was already inside the building and that's not best practice. So we moved those outside and then we did not have one at central office. We added that. We did some fencing project over at West and middle school. And then finally, the safety film we put up in windows and narrowways throughout the district is part of that safety grant. Elizabeth, you go to the next one. We, we talked, we set a couple of pictures of that. And then finally, we kind of onboarded our staff with Raptor this year. We haven't had that before. It's an alert system that allows any of our employees to just pick up their phone and immediately make us all aware of an emergency going on in the district. This was something that kind of came to us free from the state. And so we onboarded, I would say July and August. Our staff's done a good job and our administrators trying to get this up and running. It is not perfect by any means, but we are going to get even more of our staff onboard for next year. And that's kind of the, the biggest things from last March to this March as far as safety.
Any questions for Dr. Way?
Has there been any issues with, with Raptor? I know one of the things I heard was people making false alarms or anything like that, just accidentally.
No, no, but we have, so if, are you familiar with Raptor? They have kind of that hog horn and sound that comes off. And so when we go around the buildings and admin talk to us, we're like, hey, look, some of our people don't have that going on anymore. What's happened? It did happen in September. And so we've had a couple revisions of that app. And so now they're on 4.11 and only about, you know, a certain percentage of have that new app on there. So we're going to ask some more staff to re-upload that app.
I think it goes into the, the side of it, MSBA one year. It was hilarious.
Is the app mandatory for teachers?
It is not, no.
Any other questions?
Great update. I always love seeing the stuff that we can get on safety grants, so good money's good money.
Okay, anything else? Talk to Way, like what's in the future?
No, I mean, we saw that today, that no EOP, that tool that they have. And so to be honest with you, I was, I was trying to wait a year because they just kind of onboarded that this year. And only, I want to say about 200 school districts went with that. I have not heard a lot one way or the other. So I'm anticipating seeing how other districts are doing with that. And if it is something, then that's something we'll probably work on in the near future. But wanted to give it a year to see what, what it all entails.
Okay.
Are we sending any of our staff, our SROs, our, our staff members to the safety conferences?
Yeah, I've talked to Caitlin Holson about maybe possibly going representing us there this summer. Yep.
Do we conduct penetration testing annually as part of our safety program? To see if someone could get in, gain access to the building?
Yeah, so we call it plants. And so we, we're doing that twice a year now and we just completed one. And I don't have it in front of me, but we've been keeping a, a list and we are actually getting better every year or every semester. I think two of our buildings, I think at West.
Don't be too specific.
No, at West, they didn't get through the front door like Nancy Hale was on it. I think it was less than 30 seconds. There was another building that was like that too. I forget. But our worst building in the February plans was less than two minutes. So it's good. We have been trying to have them break in. That hasn't happened. And so we usually have to have an SRO let them in the door. So that's a good sign too. So we are getting better on that, but that's something we started doing a couple of years ago and we'll continue to do that.
Okay, moving on unless anybody has any additional questions? Okay, high school fiber bid?
Sounds like we're, we're going to have to do it. They're dead at the high school. And I'll tell you, we were, Andrea worked very hard on this because we had no bids. And then she worked through E-rate and extended the bid. We were brainstorming, we called, we did contact vendors directly. She texted me on a day off and said, I've got one. They still hadn't bid. But she said, I've got one on the hook. So we were, we were super excited about it and it really wasn't as crazy as we thought for one, one vendor to submit a proposal for it. So I always appreciate when Andrea's here. We have things like this. If there's any technical questions she'll have to assist me with, that I can tell you. This, this probably was a switchgear level for us. We really thought this could, could hang us up. So particularly that that.
What would have been our mitigation plan, just going at a full-up commercial rate?
We were, we were talking about that as the possibility. And then I started some conversations with Wright at a very, very low level of what we could do to tread water with, with that until we could get back out for E-rate bid. And I wasn't necessarily coordinating that because I know what the answer for Andrea would be on that is. We're out of luck, but we're going to try to pull a rabbit out of the egg, I tell you. This was a close one.
Well, Andrea, I appreciate you pulling this together, putting this bid response in here. I did not realize how much of an uphill battle this was.
She's been pushing uphill for, for a few days now, a few weeks now, so.
Few months. The big request went out in December.
Okay, any more questions for Andrea? Okay, motion to approve the Spectrum 5 gig bid for fiber at the new high school is presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. The AV bid is something that's outside of the scope of the contract at the high school. And that's why you're seeing it here instead of as part of the regular high school stuff.
That is correct. And really intention was to put this in the 25 budget. But Andrea, I'm concerned with lead time on this. And we're placing the project where I felt comfortable going ahead and pushing this forward. So really this is going to fall into the FY24, correct? Current year budget? We're going to get a bill for after July?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll, you wouldn't see this bill till after July. So it still will be likely in the FY25 budget. But we want to get board approval on it now due to those lead time concerns.
Any questions on the AV bid?
Does this, this still comes out of capital fund?
Yeah, the boards do, part of this.
I think almost all of it will end up being fund for.
We have Veronica left this, but yeah. On tech, as you, and I think probably, and Aaron, you asked that, didn't you?
Yeah.
Tech, they give us a little bit of, of latitude on that and we can be aggressive to push it into the fund we want. We prefer, prefer it to be in fund for and that's what I think it'll land at. Sometimes we get a little pushback because it doesn't, some of the stuff in tech will not hit the financial threshold. But if we can make a case that it's not going to be a consumable, we can usually get it past our auditors to let them have it in fund for.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions on the, on the bid? Give me one moment. I need a motion to approve the KCAV bid for AV at the new high school is presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Okay, old business C SIP reports. The West C SIP report, does anybody have any questions? The high school? I'm sorry, you had something?
No, I just said good job. Everybody was.
High school?
I like the format of the high school report. Did it change up a little bit this month?
So when we had evaluates again and I could do those comparisons between 23, do you like that color of the things below or just the evaluate reports?
I, I just liked the simplicity. I just liked the simplicity of the report this one. Yeah, it was just easy to read and interact.
When we have the evaluates, we can do multiple years, but I think it was last year's comparison.
Right, that makes sense.
And we're going to do the early childhood and special education one last on purpose. East, any questions on East? Okay, West, I mean, excuse me, the middle school? Central office, any additional questions there? Okay, on the special education one, Kyle wanted to ask the board about summarizing some information. So I wanted to present an idea that he had for that particular report. So Kyle, you want to go?
It was actually just specifically on.
Can you pull it up, please?
On West, it's West.
Oh, it's West?
The very last box didn't have the same summary percentages as other ones.
All right, so can you go to the particular page, please, that you were talking about?
Should be the page before the end. There?
I'm sorry, Kyle, I thought it was the special education report that you wanted to talk.
Yeah, and then if you go to the IEP one.
Oh, SPED.
No, down by the way. It was just one.
I think SPED's up above the, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
No worries, no worries. We'll get you figured out here. That one.
Yeah, it just doesn't have the, it doesn't have the percentages of advanced proficient.
Yeah, are you on math really?
It's on both of them. Like, for example, if we look at the other ones, there's a.
I'm not sure I'm tracking. So the far-right columns, the group that's for the same period of time.
And it's not on these right here.
Okay, it's just, it's the, it's the text box in the bar graph. Yep.
Yeah. The percentages are.
That's just because his cursor was on there, I think, yeah.
Those percentages are just trans, forty down to that table. So I'll make sure to look around here next time. So it, it, like Kelly said, it's a simple.
It's just your cursor hovers over.
My snipping tool, I didn't cover my current setting though. So my apologies, those boxes. When you said IEP and summary boxes, you were, I thought we were, I was like, I don't think you can do that.
Yeah.
But the bottom line is, you don't have an issue with it and to do it next month?
No, no.
Yeah, you just huddle your.
I moved my cursor too far before.
You know, I was taught, I was taught one time when you get a yes out of somebody, you've got to be quiet. So Beth wanted to bring something up.
No, I'm sorry. For doing that, I did want to ask a question on this, since we're all this attendance report. That's where I saw. Yeah, so the AMI attendance. Do I remember correctly that we, we were kind of locked in, we have to have those AMI days because of state regulations?
We do not. So they are optional for a school district. I, I don't know what the stat on, I would say broadly, they've been accepted by school districts. I read an article like this year that I was surprised, like a board finally approved using AMI. And I thought, oh wow, they had to be one of just a handful out there. And perhaps it would surprise me how many don't. But I'll make a really wild guess to say 400 of the school districts are probably using AMI days. But certainly, and I would guess this, where your concern is, is the attendance withdrawal from that was unacceptable this year. I think there's some things we can do to easily move the needle on that. It may be nothing more, more important than just communicating to our parents the importance of those days. You know, and so I, I'm sure that's going to be on our radar moving into next year. So we, we, we have that shared concern. I assure you, it was pretty disappointing to see the attendance that that drew in. I know, Mr. Smith, I know you've looked at that extensively. You want to comment on it or did I?
No, I think you summarized it well. And I think the attendance on those days is what has taken our overall attendance down below the threshold for the M76.
Already a challenge and the AMI certainly didn't help us. I think if, I think you could, you could, with the right work, front-loading work done on that, you could make AMI a positive to your attendance. I think, I mean, getting those families just to turn in the packets, attend. And then of course, you have this other issue of the value of education of AMI versus face-to-face too. You know, so it's kind of this two-pronged thing that you need to be monitoring. And we certainly, it's unacceptable, the amount of percentage in terms of attendance we got this year. Very disappointing.
So a couple of things I would say. He and I talked about this extensively when we met. I asked him if our next year calendar for, could we get rid of AMI? And so the answer was. And so the answer was, eh, probably you don't want to do it this year, but it's something we need to look at in the future, whether, you know, if we're not going to fix it, that's something. The other thing there is, I would want to know if broadband access is still the primary reason why we don't have AMI attendance.
Well, at the, at East and West, it's packets. So East and West, we're in the Blizzard bag, so it's not even an internet capability.
Yeah, but I know middle school and high school, you know, I mean, there are broadband issues where, you know, again, I think, so my take on it is, it's something that we need to, next, by the time we do next year's calendar, there should be a decision amongst the board that says, are we going to continue AMI days? And so I think the incoming administration, starting July 1st, will have, will have some work to do to see what they can do to make it better, and we can make that decision. I think that's the way it works.
I know.
Man, ask what would be the barrier to exploring if it makes sense for our district to move on from AMI days for next school year or not?
For next school year, and what I was going to mention, and I'm going to come back to that, is I appreciate, and what I spoke of earlier is the board not having a knee-jerk reaction on that, but I also appreciate that you're making it very clear that's a place that is not met expectation. So we're, the administration is getting that word, we understand that. I'll point out that you're already in a hybrid situation, so we do something, if you remember back, because the board had a concern over that other problem of just student performance. You know, do you get what you get in AMI that you do face-to-face instruction? No, you don't, we don't claim it to. So what we did was we put the first two days are face-to-face makeup days, but you have to miss those days at certain points in the calendar. So that also is a compromise, and listening to our public of, you're making this comeback to school, and we already have that day, you know, that holiday off. So it's kind of several moving parts in that, but I, so back to Ms. Lewis's question, I would say, I would, I would not want to go back to work on the calendar for 20, for the 24, 25 school year, but I think just as Mr. Jones put it, we need to be monitoring that, and if we're in the same situation with our attendance, and then we drill that into that attendance, and we're in the same situation with AMI next year, that has to be in play during calendar. It has to be, that has to be one of the things you're looking at.
Okay. I probably have additional questions, so we can talk it later.
I don't want to go too far down this road if we're not addressing it this year. I know that I've spoken to a few of you in the past, and if we are going to keep it, we need to get parents onboard for how important those packets are. I don't think that they see the value in that from the discussions that I've had, and that's my only comment. I don't want to beat a dead horse, we're not changing this year, so.
And I'll, one thing I want to add, just from a parent perspective, I like the AMI days, it gives me a little bit of insight into what they're working on in school, but I will say there was a lot of discrepancy between schools and then all unit work. And so my, my one in elementary school, it was, the packets were, you know, it was a considerable amount of work, and we used all of the days given to get those wrapped up and get it completed. So I'm working at West, and I see that it's, you know, the percentage rate is maybe, maybe the lowest there, so that's just, just something to consider.
I appreciate your feedback, because we didn't necessarily nail that, I will add to that, just a little bit, this is what I heard was, you know, there needs to be maybe a little uniformity in terms of the expectation from all the buildings.
Right.
Well, we've seen that as even within the grades at the buildings too.
Sure.
And so, yeah, we've got, it's, we've got work to do on it, I'm down about it.
I don't, I don't have any kiddos that gets a Blizzard packet anymore, but I did recall seeing on social media, people talking about when things were due or how they were due, and I don't think that that's, I didn't know the answer, but I think that rumor is, oh, you have five days to turn this in, or you have a day to turn it in. It seemed like there was a lot of confusion online as to when these things are due, and I think if we maybe nailed that down a little bit, that, no, these are due the day after the Blizzard, you know, that that people would be more directed in getting it done.
No, that is good feedback.
I just remember hearing rumors, and like I say, I don't have anybody in those buildings, so I didn't know what to tell them, but they were, people were, or for sure, when, when things were due.
And I want to say, West did an awesome job of communicating that because it kept moving, it was a moving target. Because we never knew what the weather was going to do yet.
Yeah, the five-day window, you had it set, I would communicate that in an effort to be, you know, transparent, but then we had another AMI day, so I had to jump back in on Facebook and lock that up and say, okay, so now day three is due on this day. And we ended up having to do that two or three times, so I get that it was confusing, but I was trying to stick to the five days and do all the math and make sure that.
Well, and I think people that didn't have kids in the district were trying to help our parents out, you know, like they didn't know either.
Right, yeah.
So there was just a lot.
I knew it was confusing, I knew it was, and was just hoping for the best, you know. And I think on our numbers, while I've got the four here, guys like I, I think that's parent attrition, we communicated well as much as anyone else did, any other building did, and I just don't have an answer, other than, you know, I had a few parents call me and say, my kids aren't doing it, they're going to play in the snow today, and all you can say to that is, okay, thanks for calling. So, yeah, I just, you know how it is, when you see your own dad up on the board and say.
Yeah, Mr. Crow and every teacher did a great job of communicating out, I mean, they really did. I guess the other thing to consider when we're thinking about how much work we're getting, is a lot of parents are working from home, and they're still working from home on a snow day, and some of those elementary students that, you know, they need some help to get the packets signed, so it's just a.
Work in progress, for sure, for sure. Howdy, you want to say something?
No.
I thought you did.
No.
Erin, or Kyle, you want to say something?
Well, I mean, I would just say that, like, you know, I appreciate the effort and the communications and stuff, but I think for sure, you know, we, again, it's student contact days, right, so I like those. So if we are going to continue an attendance in this manner, then I would say that next year will be our last day supporting AMI.
And the only thing I want to add real quick, two things, we've talked a lot about kind of the communication to parents and the requirements of this, of the parents and students, but I'd be there interested, this would be difficult to measure, and I recognize that, how much additional time this takes for our teachers to perpetually follow up the students to get the assignments so that that attendance rate can be, you know, mitigated as best as possible, because if they are not the ones that are following up every day, the rate, the rates will drop, and I don't know how you measure that. So that's one of the quick, I mean, we can talk this later, I just wanted to specifically clarify our barriers for next year, but I'm down.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Mary.
Dr. Berger, have you heard of any legislation that are, or ones at the state that they're wanting to back off on the tend, on putting so much stress on attendance? In one of my conversations with Jeff, I don't know, he mentioned that to me.
Yeah, and so, yeah, there is a bill that's out of, I'm blanking on the number, but it's a Senate bill, and the Senate did approve it, and it is believed that whenever it goes over the House, it'll be, you know, chewed on a little bit, but there's quite, it has a lot more momentum.
You know, they have to take that stress more off of the schools and push some of it off onto the parents.
It will, now that component of it, and I'll illustrate that, which I think will make a lot of sense, is our urban counterparts, they're, we have attendance problems, we do, but their attendance problems are even worse than ours, and the way the formula is set up is that you have an incentive for attendance, you know, you create ADA, you create average daily attendance, and make that real simple, times a number, the state adequacy target, and that's what gets you your state funding. So what the urban districts have been saying for, ever since the formula was implemented was, you're penalizing us, undo it. With this as a, attendance is a, we've been fighting for years, and when they, you know, I'm sure different school districts are making improvements, but it's just different in the urban area, they have a different challenge there. So this, this bill that came out of the Senate is loaded full of several things, several things we've talked about, but that specific thing just makes it membership, just on, so your, your state adequacy target times membership, not an ADA calculation. And so then our urban counterparts would not be penalized, so to speak, because they can't get kids to come to school. Now, we could all debate that, I know a long, long time, but I think it was probably time for that, that component of, that's a component that I would certainly support, but it'll have some also some negatives to it too.
Well, yeah, how many things are they going to stack?
Yeah, that's right. It's already a large ominous bill, and yes, whenever it goes to the House, when they come off spring break, it'll get larger, I'm sure.
Okay, anything else on the West before we, I neglected to ask if anybody had any questions on the East, I mean, the early childhood and special ed CSIP report. Sorry, any questions on that? Okay, that was a report, so consent agenda, before we do this, please go look at the employment, make sure you're not related to anybody. Okay, is anybody related to anybody? Okay, does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Just next one.
There's a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. I need a motion to go into closed session in accordance with Section 61021, the revised statutes of Missouri, to discuss three personnel and 13 individually identifiable personnel records. I need a motion? Okay, who, I'm going to give it to Beth.
Erin, second.
Erin, second.
Perfect.
Any more discussion? Roll call starting with Austin, yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, you all get.